It's five thirty-one. It is Tuesday, October thirteenth, two thousand twenty. And we are called to order for our regular session meeting. Welcome, everybody. We will do a quick roll call here of council members present, so please make sure your microphones are not muted. And indicate by voice that you're present when I call your name. Councilmember Decker.
Here.
Councilmember Hawk?
Here.
Councilmember Iverson?
Here.
Councilmember McKim?
Here.
Councilmember Munson?
Here.
Councilmember Wiltz?
Here.
All right, all here and accounted for. Very good. So before we move on to the remaining items this evening, I'd like to propose an amended agenda for the meeting tonight. I'd like to ask council to continue item seven to the next regular session meeting. The reason for this request is due to our meeting packet missing a significant amount of pertinent information related to that particular request. I know most, if not all, council members had a number of questions related to the request and item seven, and I think this additional information will be material to our consideration. And so I believe the full amount of information related to item seven was distributed to council earlier this afternoon, and if you've had a chance to take a look at that, there's quite a lot there, and so we'll want to review that, look it over, and take the time so that we can thoroughly and formulate our questions for staff to research, and hopefully this continuation will just be able to provide some additional time and adequate time for research to be conducted by staff, and we'll be able to make a more informed decision on this request, so would like to continue item seven to the next regular session meeting.
So move.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? From council members?
Information be available to the public. Let's not wait until the day of the meeting for the public to.
Yes, very good point. Thank you, Councilmember Hawk, and that that information is we'll make it available to anyone who would like to have it. It's basically it is public already through the commissioners' previous meetings. It just hasn't all been sent to us afterwards, so now that we've got it, we'll be able to really kind of dig into it. But it is, yeah, public and available. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so now is there any public comment on this item or on this motion? I see Mr. Paul has his hand up.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. Welcome.
Hi, I don't have a copy of the agenda. Can you tell us what we're talking about? You say it's available to the public, but what's the topic? What are we looking for?
Item seven is, hold on, I'll read it here. This was brought to us by the Human Resources Department. It was a request approval to create a new account line and simultaneously approve additional appropriation for countywide employee training of three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions? Or any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll go back to council. Councilmember Hawk?
Did I hear you say countywide because it's not countywide? It's only the civil side.
Well, the training, yeah, and I'll read the full description here. On September twenty-third, two thousand twenty, the commissioners approved a contract with the Garden LLC to provide professional development training to Monroe County employees. The department is now seeking the approval of a new account number and additional appropriations to fund the training. The training will serve approximately two hundred twenty-five employees over the course of one year. Services provided include three evaluations, five live training sessions. That was the agenda item that were the motion to continue those. Two hundred twenty-five employees. The account line was for employee, county employee, countywide employee training. Maybe another question that we have as we consider this? Any other questions or comments from council members before we vote? Yes, Ms. Munson?
Yes, I just signed up on the doodle poll for various options for Black Lives Matter training. And I just want to clarify that this is not the Black Lives Matter training. This is something different.
Yes, yes, thank you for that distinction. It is different. Any further questions or comments? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Miller?
On the motion to move item number seven to the November tenth regular session. Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
And there was, I did have a sorry for not asking this question. I just want to check with our council attorney, Ms. Rice. That will allow, what we just did there will allow us to keep the advertised appropriation intact, right?
Yes, that's correct, because you guys continued it.
Yeah, okay, so we're good there. Okay, so now, thank you all for that. We will now move on to item number two, which is our Pledge of Allegiance. And we have our, okay. Allegiance, the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic.
It's hard to stay in sync with.
Good thing we're not a choir.
One of my, one of my favorite exercises for the Zoom meetings is our Pledge of Allegiance. So now we'll move on to item three, which is a public comment for items not on the agenda. Do we have any members of the public who would like to make public comment? For items not on the agenda? Please raise your hand if so. And once we get a okay. I see no, nobody interested in making public comment for items not on the agenda. And we will now move on to our next item, which is department updates. Do we have any department updates? We'll take five minutes per department if we have any takers. And Commissioner Thomas is with us. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. I am not going to take five minutes. I just wanted to give you a quick update on a couple of things. As you know, we are providing CARES funding businesses anywhere in the county or social service organizations who have COVID expenses that they did not budget for. These are non-payroll expenses, and we're providing CARES funding for them. We just increased the cap per organization or business to twenty thousand dollars, up from ten. And also, sorry, I got a big truck driving by. Also, what happens when you're on the front porch? Also, I will note that as of last Thursday, we have distributed a total or approved the distribution of a total of a hundred forty-three thousand, six hundred seventy dollars and thirty-two cents in CARES funding to businesses. And we're also providing funding to taxing units, and that total so far is fifteen thousand, five hundred fifty-one dollars, and that's gone to the library, but we are expecting a few others to come in as well, and we the administrator reported that we've had a lot of interest last Friday. So there's going to be some more coming in. Really happy to report that. Also, tomorrow at the commissioners' meeting, the project that we also worked on together, which I'm so proud of, the Township Assistance Fund for our residents to ensure that they aren't evicted or that their utilities aren't disconnected. Reminder that every county resident lives in a township. Please contact your township if you're having difficulties making ends meet. That Ms. Uli from the Washington Township trustee will be attending our commissioners' meeting tomorrow. She has reported preliminarily that she has, that the fund has now expended twenty-five thousand dollars. That report will be available tomorrow morning during the commissioners' meeting, during department updates. But I wanted to let you all know that this is doing a lot of good in our community. And we have already processed the claim for the next twenty-five thousand dollars. That will be the second installment toward the hundred thousand that was pledged by this council. So again, thank you for all your help with that. Really happy and proud of all the work we're doing in Monroe County to keep our businesses going strong and vital, and to keep our residents housed and safe. So thanks for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas, for that information. Thanks for all that you all are doing as well, too. Really appreciate it. Do we have any further department updates?
Councilman Spoonmore, can I have one from the Health Department?
Absolutely, yes, welcome.
Thank you. Just a quick note. We announced last week our partnership for the new community COVID testing site, and we're glad to have that partnership with the Health Department from a grant from the state is seed money. The commissioners, the city, IU Health, and Indiana University all pitching in to make that a reality. It will be open later this month, and that is our target date. But I was also received notice from the state Health Department today that the Optum site, as you know, it's on a month-to-month contract, and they are, have secured the Optum sites through November. So the Optum site will continue through November, and we should have our community testing site up by the end of the month.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Cottle. Does anybody have any questions or comments on, yeah, Mr. Iverson?
Ms. Cottle, the new testing site that the community is going to have, will they have the ability to do antibody testing as well, or will it just be testing for the presence of the virus?
It will just be testing for the virus, whether or not you're infected. It will not include antibody testing at this time.
Thank you.
That's a great question. Thank you. All right, well, thank you, Ms. Cottle. Always great to see you. Appreciate all of the work that you're doing as well, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further department updates? Okay, seeing none, we'll now move on to item five, our council liaison updates. If we have any council members who would like to provide an update at this time? With their liaison assignments? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to item six, our commissioner's office.
Counsel, I move to introduce for purposes of notice only, but not for formal approval, ordinance twenty twenty dash forty authorizing the issuance of twenty twenty general obligation bond first reading. And ordinance twenty twenty dash forty-one, general obligation bond appropriation, also offered for first reading. I will, I was going to read the ordinance. Should I continue doing that, or should I wait for a second?
Go ahead and read the, yeah, read the ordinance.
Okay, ordinance number twenty twenty dash forty. An ordinance of Monroe County, Indiana, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay the costs of certain public improvement projects within the county. Providing the payment, for the payment of such bonds from ad valorem taxes to be levied upon all of the taxable property located in the county, providing for the safeguarding of interests of the owners of said bonds. Other matters connected therewith, including the issuance of notes in anticipation of bonds and repealing ordinances inconsistent herewith, be it ordained by the County Council of Monroe County, Indiana, that section one. Authorization of projects, the projects are hereby approved. The estimated costs for the construction and acquisition of said projects shall not exceed three million, one hundred thousand dollars plus investment earnings on the B A N ban and bond proceeds without further authorization from the county council. Exhibit A, description of projects. The projects include trucks and heavy equipment necessary for highway operations. Support vehicles for the Highway Department, parks, ADA projects identified in the county ADA transition plan. Replacement of course switches in the Justice Building. Sheriff Department radios and narcotics analyzer. Relocation of Highway and Surveyor Office, furniture, trail connection, and all related improvements, and the incidental expenses in connection with these projects.
Second, but point of order, Mr. President, did I hear something said about first reading only, not for a vote?
Yeah.
I don't believe that's correct.
Right, yeah, this is, I believe this is to be voted on this evening, yeah.
I'd like to amend my motion to indicate that we will be introducing for discussion and approval ordinance twenty twenty dash forty and ordinance twenty twenty dash forty-one.
Okay, second.
Okay, and we've heard the ordinance that's been read in entirety.
It was not in its entirety. It was excerpted.
Well, yes, yeah.
Just FYI, I don't want to like misrepresent. It's really cool.
All the relevant pieces.
Yes.
So are there, are there any questions or comments and discussion from council members? Yeah, Mr. McKim?
Yes, were the commissioners going to say a few words about the just either the commissioners or the council or the county attorney going to make a few comments about the projects and everything?
We've got Commissioner Thomas and Mr. Cockrell here, it looks like.
Right, we could start with Mr. Cockrell.
Yes, good evening. I guess I wanted to I wanted to stay kind of the reasoning behind wanting to have the formal vote tonight as opposed to in the future. There are two major things coming up on the calendar which could affect the interest rate and for the bonds, and the sooner we get those going, the more likely we are to miss those. The first is the presidential election, which historically can affect bond rates. I think this year it most definitely will, has a greater likelihood than not to affect the bond rates as opposed to some of the more historical presidential races, as well as every year at Thanksgiving. After Thanksgiving, the bond rate markets fluctuate, and there is less predictability on the rates, and that's kind of why we're asking for that to be looked at this year in October as opposed to later in the year. Clearly, if the council wants to take the additional time, you're just running the risk that one of those two factors could affect the bond rate.
Thank you.
And if I might share my screen briefly? Just to go over this again for the public.
Yeah, we got a good presentation of this at our last meeting, and so we'll do this again here.
Right.
Tonight, thank you.
Folks can see that, yes? It's always hard to tell. Okay, excellent. So this is the summary page of the various departments that will be that are targeted for receiving bond funding. And I will go through this quickly, but we can always see if there are any questions. First and foremost, we have the Highway Department with five snowplows, and again, the first payment was made on the lease. This is for the remaining payments on the lease purchase for those vehicles and the plows attached. These are support vehicles, and of course, my favorite picture, we're replacing the nineteen eighty-six tractor that we use for mowing. Probably be up for sale if anybody wants it. Cars Farm Park, we have accessibility improvements, parks and trails. Playground number one is going to be replaced, and the Patriotic Corner will be updated, reinstalled, remodeled. Justice Building, core switch, the switches are over nine years old. This is for the Sheriff's Department, handheld and vehicle radios, and one narcotic analyzer, which will save a great deal of time as we currently have to wait for the state police to bring theirs to a location. We did change, this is the one small change. We're going to use juvenile lit special projects funds to purchase the YSB passenger van, so it's still going to be purchased. That's a van with an ADA lift. But we will then be able to utilize the additional funds to purchase fleet and pool vehicles for our employees to safely get about town. The renovation and move for the Highway Department and also for the Surveyor is included here. And last but not least, we have targeted three possible projects for trails. We're leaning toward the Liberty Constitution connection, which makes sense in terms of the connection between two words. So, and that's it.
Great, thank you very much. Yeah, Mr. McKim, would you like to get started?
Yeah, and actually, this isn't about the projects. I support the projects, and I think that's a very, very sensible use of the funds for necessary county expenses, but just as a matter of process, although Councilmember Wiltz introduced it as, because I think the script said forty, ordinance forty and forty-one, in reality, she actually only read ordinance forty, so I think we should just be voting and discussing forty now, and then we'll vote, and then we'll just consider forty-one as a separate, which is the appropriation as a separate ordinance. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Do I need to change the motion at all, or can we just let this conversation suffice for the, at least the first motion for forty?
When we vote, President Spoonmore, will you just clarify that we're only voting on ordinance forty? Two thousand twenty dash forty?
Yeah.
I'm pulling up the other one now, so I should have that ready by the time we get to that. I apologize.
No, that?
No.
Make sure we were saying the right things.
Mr. Deckard and then Mr. Iverson?
Thank you very much. I did, I had a question. I did want to just say briefly that for the public watching, we talked about bonds and timing of bonds, et cetera, but the timing of bonds means savings of money potentially for the county in payment on these general obligation bonds. The question I had on the trucks and the trail connection, would we see, would Monroe County residents see the trucks in use this very winter or even sooner? And then what is it, if we did this today, what's the estimate on that trail connection being completed, physically seeing that kind of finished up?
Yeah, for your, for your first question, yes, the first payment's been made, so yes, we will have access to those the snowplow equipment. As far as I understand, I know things take a little longer right now with COVID. That's my understanding, to the best of my understanding, so I'll leave it at that. With the trail connection, we don't have a specific bit of information on a, on a date, but my guess is it would be next year. And that's just, again, that's a, that's a guess without Ms. Ridge here.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Iverson and then Mr. McKim?
Commissioner Thomas, when you were talking about taking the U Services vehicle out and then replacing it with some fleet cars, I believe he used the plural. How many cars are we talking about? Or vehicles, excuse me?
Yeah, this would be three to four, depending on what we need.
Okay, and in the picture, there were the, like, sedans. Is that typical for county fleet?
Well, so one of the things I slid that picture in there is a little nod. It's actually a picture of a leaf, which is a hundred percent electric vehicle, so that's the hope. Yeah, I slid that in there. Thank you for noticing. Yeah, so that's the hope is that we're going to, because we do have outlets in the parking garage, which are solar-generated electricity. So we do have outlets in the garage, and so that's my hope, is that we're going to be moving in that direction, and but we do need to have a discussion with fleet and with the, hopefully, the new mechanic who won't be with MVH, but will be working on the fleet and pool vehicles about which is the best and which is the easiest to work on, et cetera. So it may not be that brand, but that's still the hope.
Well, at least they're going to be energy efficient regardless, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Excellent.
Mr. McKim next, and then Ms. Munson?
Yes, I just wanted to address the trail project, so just to reiterate this trail project would most likely be a connection from the Second Street multi-use at the end of Liberty, the dead ends of Liberty right now, up Liberty to Constitution to ultimately connect to the Cars Farm Greenway. So it's a Second Street Farm Greenway. It, in terms of the timeline, there's also another piece of funding for this that would be, that's in the MPO, Transportation Improvement Program for fiscal twenty-four, which begins July first, twenty-three. So probably engineering would begin right away with this, but we, to answer Counselor Deckard's question, we wouldn't actually have concrete on the ground by next year because it's going to take some engineering and then would need to mesh with the additional federal funding coming in fiscal twenty-four.
Thank you. Councilmember Munson?
Yes, I just wanted to emphasize that the fleet vehicles for this proposal do not replace the ADA vehicle, but are in addition to it because that, the ADA van is being funded by another source, not bonding. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Rock?
Yes. Generally speaking, if this was a different time of year and circumstance, I would not be supporting this bond, not because of the projects, but because of the amount of cash that we have on hand. Because it does say we don't have the money to do these projects, and actually, my poor puppy dog, she's choking. Actually, we do have the cash on hand. However, what makes it different this year, which will help me be able to justify supporting this bond, is that we must do everything possible to treat any extra cash as what we must save to try to get us through twenty twenty-two. Now, the great news came that we could use the CARES money, and the state was going, it sounded really like they were going to process our employees' salaries at first in any request to come back for reimbursement of that CARES money. And so they were suggesting that we make sure that we're covering our employees' salaries first, the ones that we're allowed to, which will help us get through twenty twenty-two. So that's helpful, but right now we don't know how much is actually going to be coming back in reimbursement, so for those reasons, I'm going to support this bond. If that sounds like I'm talking around in circles, it's just we don't know. I mean, we absolutely do not know where we're going to be money-wise, and, you know, give us a couple of years. We don't know. So otherwise I would not be supporting this with the kind of money we have, and I always feel like you're better off to, if you've had extra dollars sitting there, not to borrow money.
Thank you, Councilmember Hawk. So, yeah, I just want to say that I'm, you know, very pleased with the list of projects in this proposal. It was very thoughtful, I think. Takes into consideration you know, a lot of the priorities that the community has right now, and you know, to me, this, this And, you know, to me, this bond really does prioritize three main themes. We see a lot of accessibility reflected in it, a lot of infrastructure and supporting our highway department, as well as supporting our public safety operations. And when I talk to constituents, you know, those are three very, very important services that they expect from county government. So happy to support this and I look forward to voting yes for it. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, so we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote on Ordinance 2020-40 right now.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
So now, counsel, I would like to move officially that we approve Ordinance 2020-41, the general obligation bond appropriation. And I will read some of that now. Appropriation ordinance, Monroe County, Indiana. Now therefore be it ordained by the County Council of Monroe County, Indiana, that Section 1, the council finds that all proceedings required before appropriation of the proceeds of the bonds and if necessary bans have been accomplished and completed. Section 2, for the purpose of paying the costs of the projects and incidental expenses necessary to be incurred with the projects and the bonds and if necessary bans, an amount not to exceed $3,100,000 shall be appropriated from the proceeds of the bonds and if necessary bans. Section 3, the auditor is directed to submit and verify this ordinance and related proceedings to the Department of Local Government Finance in accordance with Indiana Code 6-1.1-18-5. Section 4, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage. Please, second.
Oh, sorry, second. I was unmuted.
We've got a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion on Ordinance 2020-41? Mr. Iverson?
This might just be my new ears, but I just wanted to clarify for those watching at home that as we're reading this, when the word ban comes up, we're not banning anything. Instead, it's an acronym for Bond Anticipatory Note. So just want to make that clear as we're reading through these. My new ears, who knows?
A good clarification to make.
Yeah, and then just another clarification to the public that the first vote we took was on the ordinance to authorize the issuance of bonds. And then this is just to appropriate the funding. So it's really, they're just kind of the left and right hand of the same process.
Any other questions, comments? All right. We'll do a roll call vote, please.
Oh, public comment?
Or, I'm sorry. Any public comment?
Technically, this is a public hearing, so I think making that into the record is important.
Yes. Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote now.
Could you call me first?
Counselor Hawk?
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, very good, thank you. And then now moving, well, item seven, we had continued to our next regular session meeting. So we'll now move on to item eight, the legal department.
Counsel, I move to approve the interlocal agreement between the Monroe County Solid Waste District and Monroe County Legal Department.
I'm trying to be good and mute when I'm not speaking.
Who is presenting here on this one? Is this Mr. Cockrell?
Yeah, it certainly can be.
All right, welcome.
Thank you. This agreement is with Solid Waste. They've approached the commissioners about our department handling some of their, handling their legal issues and reviewing contracts and the like for them, similar to what we do for various county departments and elected officials. And this is just the agreement that would allow that and sets out the parameters for it.
Very good.
And maybe, I'll give a little bit of background, and this will apply to the next one as well, is that since this is an interlocal agreement, an agreement between two political subdivisions, it goes to the, it goes to the fiscal bodies after approved by the executive or it would go to the Attorney General. Clearly, our department always is much more comfortable with it going to the fiscal body because we want to make sure everybody's aware of the activities and what's going on and things of that nature.
Okay, Mr. Deckard, I saw your hand first, and then Ms. Wiltz?
Thank you very much. So this is the first of its kind for this particular agreement. How long does this, is it an indefinite last or is it just until they, we would break it up? How long does it go?
Well, it says that this, the agreement is for one year, commencing November 2020 to ending November 21st, 2021. However, there is a provision that says the agreement may be renewed by the mutual agreement of the parties for, after that. So it's a one-year initial agreement and then it can be extended after that year, depending on how it goes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Wiltz?
I am curious, Mr. Cockrell, what other agencies or entities do we have this same sort of agreement with, if any?
The only one that I can think of where we have something similar to this is with Parks Foundation. I think that we've agreed to do some of their work for them. That's a little bit different in that they are kind of, their sole mission is to help out the Parks Department. But there is, that's the only one that I can think of where we represent somebody who's really not a, not technically a county department.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Munson and then Ms. Hawk?
Yes. The difference between Solid Waste District and the Parks Department in terms of the services provided is that the district provides services to all residents of the county, like the Parks Department does. But we have on our Board of Directors, the mayor and a member of the city council, because city residents, as well as county residents are served. And the district provides segregated recycling, which actually leads to reuse of recycled materials. And many city residents do bring their recycling to district sites. So the county is providing services to all county residents through the district, and I believe that's why it was agreed upon. In addition, there are clauses in the agreement that if either party wishes to not provide services or have them provided, then this will be accommodated. And I would like especially to thank Commissioner Githens for working with the district and county legal on this.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Hawk?
Yes, just as a reminder, what used to be the landfill was all under county. And of course, our county attorneys worked with that the whole, the entire time. And so this doesn't seem that unfamiliar, that we would do this. At one time, we shared the same accounting process and we shared some HR expenses and so forth, because we are, we are actually, I mean, that county tax is a state, is a tax rate that's applied equally throughout the county, whether you're in the city or out of the city. And it's just an equal tax, all the way across tax rate. So in any way that we can assist to help those budgets stay reasonable, remember at one time, they used to get the income tax when they no longer receive any tax. So there's ways that we can work together on this. I think it makes a lot of sense.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, is there any public comment on the interlocal agreement? I don't see any, so we will have a roll call vote, please.
On the motion to approve the interlocal agreement between the Monroe County Solid Waste Management District and the Monroe County Legal Department, Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard? Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Move on to item B now with the legal department.
Counsel, I move to approve Resolution 2020-47, a resolution approving Ordinance 2020-38, approving the interlocal cooperation agreement between the City of Bloomington, Town of Elletsville, and Monroe County, Indiana, in regards to the 2021 animal management.
Second.
All right. Mr. Cockrell?
Yes, I guess if the last one was a new concept, this one certainly is not. We've had a similar agreement between the three entities for as long as I've been working for the county. There have been some changes in how we looked at the funding and things like that, but it's all essentially the same. It's based upon the number of animals from each of the jurisdictions as determined by either who brings, by who brings them in. They determine, and then that is separated or prorated on a per-animal basis across the budget, and then it's a math calculation at that point. This one is based on the 2019 budget in shelter use. That is simply for the convenience that we don't have the numbers for 20 yet. And so we're kind of in arrears that way, and that's how that gets calculated. I think this is fairly straightforward. We provide services to Elletsville in terms of our animal management rules and animal management officers. So that's also in this agreement. And again, we bring this to the council because it's an interlocal agreement that either has to be approved by the fiscal bodies or it has to go to the state attorney general. And our preference is always to go to the county council.
All right. Any questions or discussion on this item? Yes, Mr. McKim?
Only that I think that this framework for the animal control, animal management interlocal has really worked well over the last couple of years before. I think maybe only Counselor Hawk and I remember when this topic was a huge controversy, was the subject of acrim, you wouldn't believe it, but acrimonious debate. And I think this framework has really, has reduced it to objective criteria that can be measured, and it's worked out really well and kept the process smooth for a number of years now. So Jeff, I know you were a major, you played a major role in negotiating, working out this framework.
It works well. It was based on the same principle as what we had before. It's just we kind of, we kind of had to iron things out and get everything smooth so that everybody understands what we're doing.
Councilmember Hawk?
Yes, I want to give a shout out to the memory of Councilmember Warren Hennecker.
I knew you were going to say that.
You know, I have fond memories of Warren. And he absolutely supported this because he said it's essential for our farmers out there, that we don't have like wild packs of animals or whatever that they're having to deal with. So he really supported it and thought it was extremely important. I think it's important in neighborhoods where we just cannot have a lot of dogs running about and causing chaos, which can happen. My dog can cause chaos right here in my house, as you can imagine. But it's, I think it's essential, I think it's a part of public safety, because you know, if you have a dog that's being acting in ways that you feel like is dangerous, you need to have somebody come and help your family. So I think this is an extreme matter of public safety.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll see if there's any public comment on this item. Okay, no public comment. Ms. Miller, I think we're ready for a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right, that wraps it up for the legal department. We'll move on to item nine. Thank you.
Counsel, I move to approve the Youth Services Bureau's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 9103-9621, Safe Place, in the amount of $5,525 in the service category. And it looks like also simultaneously creating two new lines for that money. I don't know if I needed to say that.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And I believe, I see we have Mr. Malone from Youth Services Bureau with us. Do we also, is Ms. Tebman now joining us? I'm not sure if she'll be here or not. We'll check with Mr. Malone.
Vicky, Ms. Tebman is not going to be available.
Okay, okay.
All right, thank you so much.
Yes, welcome, welcome.
So these, YSB gets some money from the Indiana Youth Services Association for, to run our Safe Place program. Because we collaborate with ITVAP, the Indiana Trafficking Victims Assistance Program, we are eligible for additional funds. So that is what we call VOKA dollars. That's what these dollars are coming in now, they've already received. And they go to further programs and trainings that we already do. So to continue training, having certified trainers to teach our staff about identification of human trafficking and specific things related to kids if they have been trafficked, how we want to work with those, with those kids when they come through our shelter. That is something that we pay for. We've sent two people, our case manager and our Safe Place coordinator to Washington, DC in the past, not this year, but in the past, for the national training to become, to get more information on this topic. We also have a variety, use these for supplies, specifically for kids who have been trafficked, as well as for other runaway and homeless youth. So for things like, such as when kids come to us and they have no clothes or all their clothes come in trash bags, we'll use this to buy duffel bags for them so they don't have to walk out of our shelter with their clothes in trash bags, things like that, and a variety of other things. That's just one thing I know that Vicky's very passionate about, making sure kids don't leave our shelter with their items in trash. making sure kids don't leave our shelter with their items in trash bags. And so that's what this additional $5,000 would be used for outreach materials and then training in trauma.
Great, thank you, Mr. Malone. Any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Wiltz?
Um, I don't, I don't necessarily expect you to know the answers to this, so I don't, I don't want you to feel put on the spot at all. But, you know, I've, I've heard and read recently that trafficking of, of young people is something that is far more prevalent than I think most of us would have ever suspected. And I'm wondering what, what the prevalence is locally. How often do you, do you have this come up in your services?
Um, yeah, I don't have those exact stats for you today. What I will say is trafficking, as the whole of society is focusing on it more and more, we're beginning to see it much more often. That includes labor trafficking, that includes obviously human sex trafficking. That's the one that people are most common. That is both for girls and for boys. And so we are seeing this, I would say routinely with, between our community base and the people that come into our shelter. This is something we have to deal with on a monthly basis. I can't count that number of people that are coming through, but this is something that we typically just have to worry about. This time of the year specifically, as we are coming into Halloween and Thanksgiving and all those things, we actually, a little bit more labor trafficking as people are coming through, working in the, in the fields. It, we are, we are in that, of our community. And so that is something else that we are seeing. So I want to point out specifically, this is an issue for us. This is an issue whether or not there is, I think this goes, and I don't want to get too into the weeds here, but whether or not we talk about someone who is, if anybody under the age who is engaging in commercial sexual work is considered to be trafficked, whether or not they have some, what someone might think of as someone trafficking them or not. If they're engaging it, we are engaging it as to survive, whatever the case may be, we consider those people being trafficked. And so this is a real situation that we deal with in our community and that we deal with throughout South Central Indiana. But there are, and that is just boys, both boys and girls, labor and for the ones that are most common that we think about. So this is a real concern that we have, and we're really glad that the state, IYSA, DCS, we're all working together to provide more service to these youth as they come through doors and to make sure they get the services that they need.
Thank you. If someone suspected that someone they knew who is underage was a victim of trafficking, would they call Youth Services Bureau directly? Would they call the police? Would they call DCS? All three?
I will always suggest, if you believe that someone is in imminent danger, to call the police. Whatever that is, I'm never going to say no, no, that would be the thing. If you have a question, we welcome all calls. One of the key things that we do for our communities is provide community education. So that's for anybody, we're, you know, this is the, the county's Youth Services Bureau. Give us a call if you have a question, and we're happy to talk you through it. Our Safe Place Response and our clinicians are well-trained to help determine what needs to happen. And, and for everybody who comes through Binkley House, we have screening questions to determine whether or not there needs to be a full screen by the Department of Child Services if there is a concern relative to human trafficking. If you have a concern and you believe someone's in danger, please call law enforcement. If you have more information, or if you just want more information, I would say, about what to do and how to proceed, you can call Department of Child Services, but I will also say you could call the Youth Services Bureau, and we're happy to help.
Thank you so much for your information.
Mr. Iverson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Lund, for being here. I have two questions. Number one, is there any partnership that exists with Middleway House and this program?
Um, this is not specifically tied to shelters, domestic violence, for domestic violence. We do intersect with Middleway, and we have participated with them in building healthy relationships, which I think of as a prevention and education. But, but for this particular money, with, I do not believe that IYSA, who we, where we receive this money, it's tied to Middleway House, but I could be wrong about that. But I know they're not a member organization of the Indiana Youth Services Association.
Sure. Okay, that's actually, actually going to be it for me. Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll see if there's any public comment. We'll see any public comment. We'll do a roll call vote, please.
On the motion to approve new account lines and additional appropriations in Fund 9103-9621, Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Duckard?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Malone.
Thank you very much.
Then we'll now move on to our next item with the Recorder's Office.
Counsel, I move to approve the Recorder's request to amend the 2020 salary ordinance and add a full-time deputy recorder to Fund 1189-0000, Recorder's Perpetuation Account 10035 Deputy for 35 hours, Comment 3, minimum $16.43 hourly, non-exempt.
Second.
Okay, and I see our recorder Eric Schmitz is with us, and his chief deputy, Ms. Crainer, is with us. Welcome, both.
Good afternoon, evening, I guess at this point. How's everybody?
Terrific.
All right. Well, I'll just jump on in. What, basically, I mean, it, it basically is what it says. We, we want to add a new full-time person. We have, uh, we've gone from doing an, an average of maybe, maybe 80 documents per day to well over 100. It, it's just, you know, the workload has actually increased since the pandemic hit. I expect that for, for some time. We did 112 today, for example. I mean, we're averaging over 100 per day. And we can definitely use the additional person. As, as I've been kind of jokingly saying, we've been doing the dictionary definition of a land office business around here because we are a land office. But we, we also have the added burden of being the, the only office, well, the, the office in, in the courthouse that is by far the most open to the public. We have, we have people coming in. We're, we're the library. We have people coming in to do their, their record searching and to, to get things recorded. Of course, it's all by appointment only, and we follow all the protocols, you know, for symptom checks and temperature and all that. But I also expect that to continue for some time. We, we are up and down, going to get people at the door, especially on Mondays and Fridays. And it, we're, we're, we seem to be the, the most likely to answer our phones. I don't want to, I don't want to disparage other offices. But sometimes we'll have, you know, I mean, we'll hear that, that, you know, people can't get in touch with other offices. But in general, we, as, as we kind of always have, are serving as what amounts to the reception and help desk or information desk of, of the courthouse. People, people seem to call us with questions. So we're getting a lot of that, and, and it just, you know, it makes sense. If we have a conference and one of our people gets sick, then we end up, we can end up short-staffed. And, and if it's COVID, then we've got a real problem. Because, I mean, it's, of course, we haven't had that thankfully so far. But, you know, if one person gets sick, it's likely that, that somebody else will. And, you know, we, we have a conference that takes us away from, Ashley and I away from the office, and we want to make sure that we are fully staffed and able to complete the work. We are, we're also seriously ramping up our efforts to digitize older documents. And we've got one, one part-time person working at home doing indexing. And I, I would like to expand that, that process with, with work in the Jim Fielder Archives. And in, in this way, it really kind of, you know, I, I feel like I could make the case for, for this being, because this is being funded out of perpetuation, I feel like I could reasonably make the case that that proportion of our salary, salary requirements makes sense to be paid out of perpet, perpetuation because that's what it's for. Let's see, what else can I tell you here? I, I don't, I don't want to make the claim that we are self-supporting, as it were, but, but in a way, we sort of come close to that in that what we contribute to the general fund at least covers salaries, if not benefits and, and, and other, you know, other payroll deductions, or payroll items. And, you know, I, I understand, you know, the caveat that, that no office is an island. We all support each other, which is a good and right thing. We have already, the, the person that we want to bring in, she's in here on, on part-time basis at this point. We hope to have her be full-time tomorrow. And I, you know, I, I have to brag on her because she, she has been a very fast learner, a self-starter. She's, she's just picked it, picked it right up. And, you know, we, we've just, we've got such a good team going here right now. I'm really proud of all of them. So I, what else can I tell you?
I think that's, Mr. McKim, got a question?
You know what I'm going to ask you? What's, what's the balance of the Recorder's Perpetuation Fund?
I got it right here. And we are asking for a $31,000 a year salary plus longevity and FICA and Medicare and all that.
Just so other counselors understand, for very, you know, for, for various quirks of legislative history, the council doesn't appropriate the Recorder's Perpetuation Fund. So they, the Recorder's Office gets to spend that without council appropriation.
Within statutory limits, which I would maintain.
Yeah, you're right, right, without, right, statutory limits, yes.
Recorder's done a good job of building up the reserves. Hey, any other questions or comments, Mr. Iverson?
Yeah, as liaison to the department, I, I was able to stop in the other day, and they're as busy as they say they are. It was, the foot traffic was, was pretty, was pretty high. It was, but, you know, being on the first floor, that's where it is. So I, I, I really support this, and thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, anything further? Any public comment? Doesn't appear to be any public comment on this item, so we'll have a roll call vote, please.
On the motion to approve the amendment to the 2020 salary ordinance, Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Duckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you all so much.
Now move on to item B for the Recorder's Office.
Counsel, I move to approve the Recorder's request to amend the 2020 salary ordinance part-time hourly range cap in Fund 1189-0000, Recorder's Perpetuation, from $16.25 to $17.20 hourly.
Second.
If, if I may, may I ask that, that my chief deputy, Ashley Crainer's video and audio be turned on so that she can take the lead on this one?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Hi, everybody.
Welcome, Ms. Crainer.
Okay, so first off, I want to start off with, the rate is actually incorrect on the agenda. So the cap would actually be $16.43, which is what the current minimum hourly rate for Comet 3 is right now, not the 1720. So if we can make that correction, so we can, you guys can consider it appropriately, that would be fabulous.
So counsel, I would like to amend my motion to reflect that we are amending the 2020 salary ordinance to, to change the part-time hourly range cap in the Recorder's Perpetuation line from 1625 an hour to 1645 an hour.
Forty-three.
Forty-three, turn it, an hour.
So close.
Forty-three, okay.
Can we second that?
Second.
All right.
Okay, motion. Is there any questions on the motion?
My only question was going to be why we just talked about 1643 an hour for that position, for the Comet, and then, so it's all good?
Councilmember Munson?
Yes, are we not, as a council, still to take action on the approval of the increase for, for hourly? And if so, could we not just accommodate this position in that deliberation? I got silenced.
May we want to consult our attorney?
Yes, and so, so the issue is the hourly rate, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And Ashley has said it's 1643?
Right.
Right, so as long as the minutes reflect that that's the hourly rate that you guys are considering and approving, I think we're going to be fine. Is that your question, Cheryl?
Well, actually, no, that, the request was to increase the hourly rate from.
Ceiling.
Pardon? The ceiling, from 1643 to, oh, tell me the number, please.
From 1625 to 1643.
Okay.
And 1643 is the amount that Ashley, you want to pay, is that correct?
Correct. Given the current example that we have, our part-time person who's working 58 hours as a deputy reporter, she's actually, has been working at last year's Comet 3 rate, doing all of the same duties, just without the benefits of full-time. So our office has always had, when we have a part-time deputy recorder, has always had that hourly rate in line with the minimum of a Comet 3, since the duties are exactly the same. So, and as she's been making less in this example than the other employees per hour that, and they're all doing the equal work.
Good. Ms. McKim, and then Ms. Wiltz?
Well, so I'm just following up on Counselor Munson's request. She, so the Recorder's Office came here to ask for an increase in the ceiling. And I think what Counselor Munson is saying is, we're going to increase the floor for everybody. Why don't we just go ahead and do it now for this one, right? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Yes, I was wondering why multiple actions here were needed.
So, so. So, so if we increase the floor to, is it fourteen, is that the number we were considering? So if we increase the floor, Ms. Crainer, if we increase the floor to fourteen, would that create a problem for the Recorder's Office?
Well.
But what about other departments?
I'm not sure if I understand if, then what would the cap be?
Sixteen forty-three.
Oh, okay, no, that's not a problem.
And just to clarify, are you only talking about the Recorder's Office?
Correct, in my position. I mean, I, I, Cheryl's talking, I think, generally.
For county-wide, yeah.
County-wide.
And I guess I, I just would want to make sure that there aren't any, you know, effects, unintended consequences.
Right, me too.
Well, we're getting ready to do this anyway, later today. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, so, so, so what Cheryl, you're saying is just move the thing on later on the agenda, move it up, is that what you're saying?
What, what I'm saying is that I think, I think this request can be accommodated by the, the, the agenda item to come.
Yes.
Will you need Eric and I for that agenda item?
No.
Yeah, we want you to stick around.
And I always think it's good to make sure that you're specifically addressing this request from this department, and it's in the minutes that you're agreeing that this person can be paid this specific amount. I don't think that clarity ever hurts.
Okay.
So.
That's fine.
Perhaps, uh, well, we'll see what Mr. McKim has to say here.
Well, okay, I'm, I'm just looking at the agenda, and do we actually have, uh, do we actually have an agenda item to amend the salary ordinance today? I see a topic about the, uh, about the budget.
Oh, it's just the budget, you're right. Counselor.
Yeah, I don't think we're, I don't think we're.
Salary ordinance. Okay.
So I suggest we just move.
I, I withdraw my questions now that I see that it's, that we're talking about apples and oranges.
So I, I have a quick question, though. So based on what the councils, I, I'm somewhat familiar with your part-time, um, range plan. So that would just be, you, you're creating, um, the lowest at fourteen dollars.
Correct.
And then, how are the caps gonna be set for each department?
Just like you're doing right now.
Okay.
It doesn't change anything unless you have other people, other positions being paid out of part-time that would be lower than fourteen.
Right, right, okay, yeah, that wouldn't, that wouldn't affect our office at all. And I commend you guys for, um, raising that baseline up, too. That's amazing.
Yes.
Yeah, so, okay, well, however you guys want to do it. We can go ahead and, you want to just go ahead and address it now?
I, I think it's right to address it now.
Okay.
As, as our attorney has recommended, and I see that there's nothing specific, uh, in Agenda Item eighteen that refers to the Recorder's Office. So let's make sure we cover the Recorder's Office.
Okay, uh, Ms. Wiltz, did you have a, a comment or a question, too?
Um, are we, so are we amending the motion again?
No.
Okay.
No, no amendments.
I think you guys can vote.
I'm good with voting.
I'm good with voting, too.
Me, too.
We're going crazy here.
So we're just voting on the amendment right now. Any public comment on the amendment? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, so now we'll go back to the request as amended. Uh, any questions on that? Okay, seeing none, is there any public comment? All right, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson? Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, and just, uh, some additional information here for the Recorder's Office. I know that there was another item that you all had wanted included on the agenda tonight. We didn't, we weren't able to get that incorporated, um, uh, in time for the meeting, but we do have, uh, uh, our first reading, uh, for the budget, and I think it ties into that very well, uh, on the nineteenth, so we'll make sure to add that as an item, uh, for the nineteenth, and, um, should go pretty quickly, I'm sure. Does that sound good?
Yeah, we'll be there.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you all, have a good evening. And next up is our Public Defender's Office.
Counsel, I move to approve the Public Defender's request for a midpoint hire of a deputy public defender in Fund 1000-0271, account line 12135.
Second.
Okay, the motion and second, and I believe, uh, Ms. Stufel is joining us tonight from the Public Defender's Office. Perhaps? Maybe not. Well, I, uh, I don't know that we want to vote on this until we hear specifically from the department on.
Move, we postpone this item indefinitely. Means we can take it back up at any time.
Okay, any, any questions or comments on Mr. McKim's motion? Uh, any public comment on Mr. McKim's motion? Okay, uh, we will do a roll call vote, please.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, we have item B, uh, for the Public Defender's Office as well, too, and we, we may want to have a similar uh, outcome with that.
So counsel, I move to postpone indefinitely the request, um, from the Public Defender's Office to amend the 2020 salary ordinance in accordance with the previous request.
Second.
Okay, motion and second, any, uh, comment or questions? Seeing none, is there any public comment? On Ms. Wiltz's motion, seeing none, uh, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Not present.
Not present. Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, and, uh, Ms. Miller, maybe just make a note to check in with, uh, Mr. Hunt and Ms., uh, Stoll and see, uh, just let them know kind of what, what, what the, what the plan is going forward, thank you.
Absolutely, I'll do that.
Um, all right. Our next item is, uh, with our Extension Office.
Counsel, I move to approve the Extension Office's request for a midpoint hire of the Education Assistant in Fund 1000-0011, account line 11104.
Second.
Okay, and there's, yeah, did you have a?
As, as the liaison, I was going to just provide a little background. Ms. Thompson would have liked to have been here, but is camping in the beautiful fall weather in Tennessee right now. And I told her to please do not call in from the fireside, so hopefully, um, she's enjoying that. But essentially, for some background information, their, um, office manager retired, and their secretary moved from her position as secretary into the office manager spot. And they have now found a candidate that they really like to move into the secretary, uh, position. And this particular, uh, candidate has, um, a combination, and I'll quote from her email, "Combination of skills and experience that was unique among our pool of candidates. The secretary position is typically the initial point of contact for the public with her office. Uh, this person's experience in the, uh, emergency room and in the restaurant industry, as well as her experience coordinating volunteer events, make her a very good candidate and, uh, good fit for this position. Um, dealing with public can on occasion be a challenge, and that's the case in, um, the Extension Office as well. Um, and, um, she gives some examples that I can very much relate to, having started out my work life as a, a secretary in a, uh, park district. You get some very, very, um, upset and anxious people with various animal and plant problems that they have a hard time with. So it's, it's like any front-facing office, you need to have some people skills. Um, so, um, there are knowledge, she has a knowledge, skills and experience, um, and the suite of office skills that this office needs as well, so people and, um, office skills both. And so they are requesting that, um, this be a midpoint hire.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wiltz. Uh, do we have any, uh, counsel comment or discussion on this request? Uh, so Ms. Hawk first, and then Mr. McKim.
Um, just, this not particularly about this, uh, position, but just in general, it seems to me that we continue to be hiring at midpoint. Everything, anybody that wants to be hired, they get to be at least midpoint. That sort of skews our whole process. And so, I, you know, maybe that's something we also need to look at, uh, when we're looking, working with WIS, because what's the point in having an entry level salary if we're never going to use it? It's. I mean, I don't know what we're doing here, but. Don't want to practice on just this one, but I think it's something we need to discuss.
Okay, uh, Ms. McKim, did you have a?
Actually, my comment was along the lines of the one that Counselor Hawk just made, and maybe, maybe we ought to, uh, see if we can get some data as part of the WIS review, get some data on the, the number of, of zero-year minimum hires versus midpoint hires, just, just to see. I mean, it seems like we do a lot of them because we review them, but of course, departments are also hiring all the time, and a lot of those may be minimum, and we don't even know about it because we don't see it. So if, if we had some data to address that, that would probably be a good idea.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Wiltz?
Um, I was going to suggest the same thing that Counselor McKem just said, and just to point out that we do have a, a process through human resources, and maybe that also needs to be considered and reviewed in the same kind of light, I mean.
Yeah.
But it, but Human Resources did review, um, this, this particular candidate and supports the request.
Okay. Any other questions or, uh, comments on this item? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Okay, I think we're ready for a vote.
The motion to approve the midpoint hire request, Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Counsel, I move to approve the Extension Office's request to amend the 2020 salary ordinance and amend Fund 1000-0011, General Fund Extension, account line 11104, Education Assistant, thirty-five hours, Comet Three, eight-year, Level Two, midpoint level.
Second.
Okay, any, uh, any questions? Anything?
Saving money.
Anything further to discuss? All right, uh, any public comment? Okay, well, uh, we'll have a vote, please.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, up next is, uh, we'll visit with Ms. Cottle again, uh, with the Health Department, welcome back.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for a category transfer in Fund 8150-9620, TAMP Futures, in the amount of four thousand, one hundred eighty dollars, dollars and seventy-five cents in the Supplies category, and one thousand, six hundred ninety dollars and forty-one cents in the Services category, for a total transfer of five thousand, eight hundred seventy-one dollars, sixteen cents into the Personnel category.
Second.
Hello, Ms. Cottle?
Good evening, the TANF money that supports Futures, that are Family Planning Clinic, and that grant cycle actually runs October through September, so this is in many ways just housekeeping. We're finishing up the grant cycle and, uh, trying to kind of adapt those funds. We've essentially spent them, we just need to clear up some of the lines. So we needed to do those transfers through category transfers.
Very good, thank you, any questions, counsel? Any public comments? All right, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for a category transfer in Fund 8126-9621, Title X or Title X Futures, in the amount of four thousand, five hundred dollars from the Personnel category to the Services category.
Second.
Again, uh, sort of housekeeping, the Title X is our Family Planning Clinic funding again. And that is April through March money, so we're just trying to, uh, clear up so that we have enough money in that Services category to get us a little bit longer. The Title X money always comes in chunks, and we should be receiving our second kind of award, so we should be getting an amendment to our contract pretty soon. So I anticipate hopefully having, um, that on our agenda soon so that we will have funds that will finish us through March.
Yeah, very good, thank you. Any counsel, uh, comments? Any public comment? All right, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor. Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for a category transfer in Fund eight, one, zero, four, dash, nine, six, two, one, Public Health Emergency Preparedness in the amount of three thousand dollars from the Services category to the Supplies category.
Second.
I'll make this easy on you, we actually want to pull this one tonight. So we, I do not need this at this time.
Motion withdrawn.
Very good, we'll move on to Item D.
It does look like no action is needed, and it's either Auditor Smith or Ms. Cottle.
It's actually going to be me.
Um.
All right.
Going to present on this one, and if you guys have any questions, you can ask Penny. Um, so, give her the hard part. Um, so in June, Council approved and appropriated sixty thousand and eight dollars of new grant funds for the Immunizations Program. At the time, the Health Department didn't, did not know if the funds would be under one CFDA, which is Catalogue of Federal Domestic Assistance, Number Or Two. Health chose CFDA Number ninety-three point five, three, nine, and Fund eighty-one, fifty-eight, since this was used most recently by the state for the Immunization Program. The department received the grant contract information regarding the sixty thousand and eight dollars, and it has been assigned to a different CFDA number, which means a different fund number. The department wanted you to be aware, the Auditor's Office will be making the changes from Fund eighty-one, fifty-eight to Fund eighty-one, thirty-eight, Immunization CFDA Number ninety-three point two, six, eight. This grant runs from July first of twenty-twenty through June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-one.
Very good, thank you, Ms. Miller. Ms. Cottle, does that all sound good to you?
She explained it very, very well. We, you know, had to roll the dice, and we rolled it wrong, I guess. It was a fifty, fifty uh, chance on what, what, how the money was going to come. Last year, they split it between two funds. So uh, we weren't sure when we got the award letter, what, what fund it would actually need to go in. And so we guessed, and we guessed wrong, and we just need to correct it.
Gotcha. So we don't need to do anything with this tonight, though, right?
Just informational.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much, appreciate it. And uh, I think that concludes everything for the Health Department tonight. Appreciate you being here, see you soon. And up next is our Prosecutor's Office. And uh, it looks like Ms. Hamlin is with us, Ms. Wilt, did we have a motion?
Sure, uh, Counsel, I move to approve the Prosecutor's Request for an additional Victims Assistance Assistant Position to the twenty-twenty-one General Fund Prosecutor, Account Line thirteen, zero, three, two.
Second.
All right, and so uh, just to, some, some background on this. We did approve this position for the two thousand, twenty-one budget. I had talked to um, Michelle and Ms. Rice about the need for having this approved in a, in an actual uh, meeting. And we thought that would be a good idea, just to, you know, make, make sure that we're uh, getting everything accounted for correctly. And uh, also uh, Prosecutor Oliphant has, has joined us as well, too, thanks for being here. I don't know that it's, it's necessary for you, for you all to, to be here, but appreciate you taking the time to uh, be here if, if there's any questions. So uh, did, we, we heard the budget request uh, back when, when we um, uh, included that. But is there any additional information that uh, the Prosecutor's Office wanted to share tonight?
I don't have anything additional.
I don't think I do either, um, I just wanted to be available in case you had any questions.
Yep, great, thank you very much. Mr. McKim?
Well, so, okay, thank you. So just to, to confirm, the, the intention is to have this position start January first? Or is it to have it start immediately, January first?
Yes.
Okay, good, thanks.
Any other questions or uh, comments from counsel? Okay, any public comment on this? All right, we'll, uh, we'll have a, a roll call vote, please, Ms. Miller.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay.
Great, thank you all.
You bet, yeah, everything's official, thanks for, for being here with us tonight, take care.
Of course, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good.
Go. All right, next up is uh, the Auditor's Office.
Counsel, I move to approve the Auditor's Request to update the job descriptions, titles and classifications for the twenty-twenty-one budget year. And I will now list a whole bunch. Uh, so we have one, zero, 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 two from Property Customer Service Representative, one, Comet Three, to Assistant Property Director, PAT Two, Non-Exempt. One, zero, 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 three, County Financial Director, PAT Three, Exempt, No Change. One, zero, zero, one, six, Accounts Payable Administrator, PAT Three, Non-Exempt, No Change. One, zero, zero, one, seven, from Property Customer Service Representative, Two, Comet Three, to Economic Development Coordinator, PAT Two, Non-Exempt.
Hi, everyone, how are you doing this evening?
I'm not finished, Kathy, I'm sorry.
I thought you were looking at me like, would you, I'm sorry, go ahead. Stop barking.
I, I was, yeah.
If PTSD could just put a, a mute on uh, Councilmember.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was very distracted. Um, yeah, I hope I am not skipping anyone. Um, one, zero, zero, one, eight, from Property Customer Service Representative, Three, Comet Three, to Property Transfer Coordinator, PAT Two, Non-Exempt. One, zero, zero, two, zero, General Ledger Manager, PAT Three, Non-Exempt, No Change. One, zero, zero, four, four, Internal Auditor, PAT Three, Exempt, No Change. One, zero, zero, four, five, GIS Customer Service Representative, PAT Three, Non-Exempt, No Change. One, zero, zero, two, one, one, zero, zero, two, from Administrative Coordinator, Comet Three, to Administrative Assistant Commissioners, Comet Four, Non-Exempt. One, one, zero, one, three, from Counsel Assistant, Comet Three, to Administrative Assistant Counsel, Comet Four, Non-Exempt.
And second.
Thank you.
All right. Kind of a similar situation to what we had with Prosecutor's Office. These uh, had, had been previously discussed as part of the Auditor's uh, Budget Request was included in that. Uh, Ms. Smith, welcome. Um, is there any additional information uh, that you'd like to share with counsel?
Uh, thank you, actually, I guess some good information. So this is a culmination of uh, of the plan that I set in place and worked with the um, the then uh, PAC Committee when I first took office, now almost four years ago, soon to be four years ago. So I wanted to um, let you know that it's been a long four years, I'm not gonna lie, it's been a long four years. However, this job is quite challenging, and you really have to seek the best and the brightest people. You do not want someone who's just, you know, you know, you find, but not like, sharp. So we, I mean, I've really sought out how to, to, um, to recruit sharp people, to keep sharp people, to treat sharp people right. Because that's what I expect, to be able to handle your guys' financial needs, the commissioners' financial needs. I mean, we're not playing, this is a huge, huge amount of money that passes through this place, and thousands and thousands and thousands of transactions. And if you compare today's Auditor's Office with four years ago, eight years ago, it's amazing. Um, it's absolutely amazing, and it's not anything I've done, it's absolutely what the staff has done. So when I first came to off, into office, what I wanted to do was erase what had happened before, which was, you know, friends getting promotions and other people getting bumped down and this, you know, to, to, to kind of put it the way somebody wanted it. What I really wanted to do was to, to get Wes to help me and come up with the best structure so that we could attract good people, keep good people, and make good people happy to work here and produce, and, and produce very, very well for both you guys and the commissioners. I think we've attained that, and this is just a culmination, uh, the very last little bit of it. And um, you guys did place this stuff in the budget for next year. So as far as details go, you know, unless you guys just really want to hear details, I more just wanted to say, you probably never have to see me again. Going to PAC is not a lot of fun, I'll be honest with you.
Well, thank you for the, uh, for the information there.
I mean, it isn't, it, it's stressful, it's worse than going to the county council meeting, if you ask me, I love going to county council meetings. But the, the issue is, you're a cheerleader for somebody else, and to go to PAC, and when that fails, you feel like you failed them. So I want to be really clear about that, it's not the people on PAC, it's, it's, it's not even the process on PAC. It's, it's the fact that you have the responsibility as, as the cheerleader and the person who's trying to do the right thing. And sometimes things don't work out the way you planned. Like, I wasn't planning on these positions that did get bumps, small bumps, even though they're, they're not that big a bumps. Uh, I didn't plan on taking two years, but it did. And so, um, but I'm very grateful, and I'm very grateful for not just the people that work for me, uh, but to have commissioners and to have county council people who understand that our best asset in this county is our staff, bar none.
Well, well, uh, second that. Um, you know, I've got to say, I've been on PAC now for three, four years, and I, we, we started discussing this all the way back then. And um, you know, if this, if this is approved tonight here, maybe it's time for a new assignment for me. I think I've accomplished everything that there is to be done for, for PAC at this point.
And I'm greatly appreciative, greatly.
I'm ready to go, too. Somebody else do this.
And me, three.
Why bother?
Peter had just said that he was interested in PAC just moments ago.
I, I was just thinking, what am I going to do with my life?
Yep, well, I, I can tell you. I've got a good suggestion. All right, um, Ms. Wilt.
Well, first I'd like to say that I think our council representatives to PAC are doing a fabulous job and should continue to be doing a fabulous job for as long as possible.
Good job, Kate, good job.
Um, and I did also want to say that um, I, when I first started, almost two years ago, um, and I was liaison to your office, um, Auditor Smith, and you explained the vision that you had for your office, and this was part of it, and this has been a long time coming. And I know how disappointing it was when it didn't, it didn't work last year. And um, and I felt that disappointment, too. So I'm really excited to get this official and, and in the books and um, get your, your people what they deserve.
Thank you for those kind words. I, I will tell you that I work closely with Jessica, and Jessica has been instrumental in the direction of our department. We've worked together very well in parallel, um, and focusing on trying to make the best unified auditor treasurer organization in the state. She's been amazing, and she has been in, knowing what's going on and instrumental in, in, in understanding and helping me every step of the way. So I think that will help you guys as, as down the road, something else happens, because, you know, eventually I do want to retire.
Right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Hawk, did you have your hand up?
Oh, God, no.
Marty would be glad I'm not coming back.
Well, you know why, okay, so. We can no longer have any department head go directly to Wes to get ahead of everybody. And we have got to get that messy job, this can't happen again, so, there. Now, because it's not fair, we've got a lot of department heads who have visions for their partners, too. And we all need to follow the rules and do it in, in the manner that is put forward, so.
I think we've uh.
I was ready to go on, but you pushed me, so.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Any public comment? Seeing none, we will have a roll call vote, please.
On the motion to approve the Auditor's Office Job Descriptions, Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Oh, we need to.
You're muted.
I can read your lips, it's a.
Don't mute it, maybe.
Yes.
There we go, okay, Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, we'll um, move on to Item sixteen now.
Um, actually, I, I'm wondering if we could reopen um, Item eleven, um, now that we have a representative from the Public Defender's Office who's joined us.
It's your, yeah.
Okay. Okay, in that case, um, Counsel, I move to approve the Public Defender's Request for a midpoint hire of a Deputy Public Defender in Fund one, zero, 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 dash, zero, two, seven, one, Account Line one, two, one, three, five.
Second.
All right, and uh, is it Ms. Stoffel, yes, is a, is here with us.
Hello. Good evening.
Good evening.
Oh.
So I've never done this before, so you let me know what I need to do. Um, I submitted our paperwork, um, we have a candidate, I've actually, we, he actually started yesterday. And um, I, I understand that he will not, um, even if this gets approved, he won't get to have the midpoint pay until later. Um, but he is from Lawrence County, and it's so much easier um, with the caseloads that we have, to have someone come into the office that can literally pick up and take any case that come, that we're appointed to. Um, some, we, we do hire students that we've had and that, you know, graduate and pass the bar. We um, actually hired two in January. And um, that they're great to have also, but it takes them time and experience to be able to do the um, DCS cases and those higher lever, level felonies. So um, to have this gentleman on board is um, very nice. And we'd like to be able to compensate him, um, if we can.
Yes, and um. So, and, and this received the, the approvals, the necessary approvals that are required from the Human Resources Department as well.
Yes.
Uh, and that may be some, a, a process that we want to look at as well, you know, when, when we have these uh, requests come to us. We may want to have our HR representative here, uh, just kind of, you know, discuss their evaluation. And that may be the more, actually, the more uh, important aspects of these decisions. Uh, but thank you, uh, Ms. Stoffel, for, uh, for joining us and, and presenting the information. I think we all have reviewed uh, the credentials and the background of the employee that uh, we're, we're considering here tonight. Are there any questions or comments uh, from counsel? On this request? Okay, any public comment? Seeing none, uh, we'll, we'll take a roll call vote on the request to hire at the midpoint.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk? Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor. Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Counsel.
You too.
So we have a second part that we need to do.
Oh yes, that's right. We have the salary ordinance.
Sure. So counsel, I move to approve the public defender's request to amend the 2020 salary ordinance and amend account line one two one three five, deputy public defender, thirty-five hours EXE one, three-year level to midpoint level.
Second.
Okay. Any, any questions or comments? Uh, yeah, Mr. McKem.
No, no, I was just mentioning that this is, th- this one would be, uh, um, revenue neutral since there are three years mid, it is essentially the same as midpoint.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Any other, uh, questions or comments from counsel? Any public comment? Okay. We'll have a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk? Not present. Motion passed unanimously.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Do.
And now we'll move, uh, on to item sixteen.
Sixteen. Counsel, I move to approve the request to update the budget director grant administrator job description. Pat four to council administrator, pat five for the twenty twenty-one budget year.
Second.
Okay. Again, a, a similar, uh, type of situation of what we saw with prosecutor and, uh, the auditor's office. This, uh, this position has been reviewed by PAC, uh, was forwarded with a positive recommendation to counsel. Uh, all the changes were included in the two thousand twenty-one budget review process. Uh, and so now we're going to do the formal approval in a meeting.
Yeah.
If I can, can I address this as well? This, um, is a change that has been in the works for, um, quite some time. It was first talked about when Shelley Yoder was still on the council and a job description or job duties were considered. And we drafted a, a job description, sent it to, you know, talked about it at PAC, sent it to Wes. Wes factored it and sent it back. And the idea is that the council will have its own administrator, much like what the commissioners have in terms of an administrator, somebody that should be your eyes and ears at the county when you can't be there. Obviously the role of the commissioners is different than the role of the council because they're the executive and legislative branch, whereas they're the fiscal branch. But the idea is the same is there'd sort of be similar positions. And the council administrator can work with the commissioner's administrator to work out things on behalf of, of their constituents. So, um, it has gone through the process. Um, but if you have any questions, I've, I've been involved. I'd be happy to try to answer any that you might have.
Any, uh, any questions? Thank you, Ms. Rice. Any questions or comments? Counsel, all right. Any public comment? No, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
On the motion to approve the council administrator job description, Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay. Um, we will now move on to item seventeen. Lengthy agenda tonight.
So it looks like
And this is, yeah, well, so I'm sorry. I will, uh, want to open up, this, this is a discussion. Uh, and a potential approval regarding a transfer from the general fund into Rainy Day. And, uh, we'll open this item up for discussion, uh, about a potential transfer from the general fund, uh, into the Rainy Day Fund. I know our auditor is here. Um, and, uh, she may have some information, uh, to share as well too. Um, and then, you know, as we, as we discuss this, if, if somebody would like to make a motion, uh, we can certainly make that decision here tonight as well. So, I guess we'll start with Auditor Smith and just kind of get her, um, idea and, and, and opinion on this and, and recommendation on what might be a good move for counsel right now.
Sure. Thank you, uh, for welcoming me back. Uh, my feelings on Rainy Day is that, um, is that Rainy Day, Rainy Day Fund is meant to be a savings account for emergencies. That's, that's really what it's for. It's, it could be used for, for large projects down the road and some different things. But truly it's a, it's an emergency fund. And with everything happening this year, it just seems prudent to, if we have money to move it over there, to make sure that we can expend that money to a safe place so that it doesn't count against us when we do our DLGF, uh, budget requests. And that we have it securely put aside and may be earmarked for true emergencies, especially this year. Uh, so, so what I'm recommending is that we lower the cash and move this money over to the general, to the Rainy Day Fund from the general fund, to the tune of about a million and a half or, you know, a million, three quarters, whatever you guys think, um, y- you feel comfortable with. Um, I, I don't think in the future, if things do get bad, we will have this opportunity again. So I think it's very, very important to grab this opportunity while we can. Um, so it's just my, I'm just a very fiscally conservative person. And I think, I think we've seen in this last few months that maybe it's good to have an auditor that is fiscally conservative because it sure helped to have, helped to have that money in there because we could make decisions faster and we can move things around before the care stuff came out and FEMA and, and all the stuff that the, um, the, uh, state allowed us to do. So I like that flexibility. I think you guys are, I, I think everybody in this group, uh, in, including the commissioners, I think really do want to make sure that the county comes first and that we do have planning in place. So if we do have money, it's sitting there earmarked for an emergency. So with respect, I'd like to ask to move at least one and a half million dollars to Rainy Day.
Okay. Thank you for that, uh, uh, information, Mr. McKem.
Yeah. Can I, can I go over the, uh, the kind of the status of the Rainy Day Fund just, uh, for a moment?
Please. Yep.
Okay. May I share my screen? Okay. I am, uh, let me all, all in big in it. This is the, um, the four B spreadsheet you, uh, that I believe all of you already have. But I just added a tab, uh, for the Rainy Day Fund, just to kind of show where we are here. And the, this block in the middle here kind of summarizes. The, um, the cash balance, uh, as of the day that I purchased, which was, uh, on the fifth, uh, we had, the Rainy Day Fund had about six point nine million dollar balance. There are some existing appropriations for, uh, COVID emergency response, uh, that, um, that I listed up here. Uh, and if all those appropriations are actually spent out, then we'll wind up, we would wind up with a point six, eight, nine, uh, million dollar Rainy Day balance. We've discussed right here, making a one point five million dollar transfer, which would leave us, uh, with a end of the year Rainy Day balance of about eight point, almost eight point two million dollars. Now, um, we've already, the, the, this, uh, these blocks up here summarize, uh, the actions we've taken so far. We have already, uh, transferred and in February, one point five million dollars into the Rainy Day that essentially we had, had intended to do the previous year and just didn't get around to do it before the year got out. Um, and, uh, then I, I listed the one point five here as a, uh, as a projected transfer. Now, my only question is, do we want to do more? And I would think we do. Uh, if we go back to the, um, the tab of the four B where we calculate the, um, the operating balance. If everything goes as projected, even including this one point five million dollar, uh, rainy transfer, we're still going to have a forty-seven percent operating balance in, um, in general, which I know is larger than the auditor is generally recom- recommended. So I think we could go, you know, I think we could go two or even higher. Uh, but I'd like to hear what everybody else thinks.
All right. Who's got a, who would like to start? Um, Ms. Wiltz?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, um, if Counselor McKem could, or the auditor could talk a little bit about in any restrictions that might be on the money that we move to Rainy Day. Um, because I, I, you know, I'm very interested in putting as much in there as I can, but I want to make sure that if something comes up, we can use it.
It's, it's, all has to be appropriated. So that's come back to be appro-
Yeah, I believe that was actually, um, sent out earlier as a form of message
Such a name.
by Bree, um, that actually had the resolution, the ordinance that created the Rainy Day Fund. I'm trying to find it.
And it has to be appropriated and it requires, uh, more than just a majority vote to
I can, if you'd like, I can address that.
Do, do that, please.
Yeah. So, um, ordinance two thousand four created, or two thousand four dash fourteen created the county's Rainy Day Fund. And you can find detail in chapter two seventy of the Monroe County Code. But it states that the purposes of the fund shall be as follows. It's to supplement county budgets when the county experiences shortfalls in COAT distributions, to cover expenses that result from emergency or sudden and unforeseen. Yep, here it is. So if you look at two seventy dash thirty-eight subsection C list, and it says that the, um, in subsection D, that the dispersments from the Rainy Day Fund are subject to the same approval and appropriation processes other funds that receive tax money. Um, you have to make a finding before you make an appropriation that the proposed use of the Rainy Day Fund is consistent with these purposes. And, um, our ordinance tracks state law that says, you know, that puts a cap on the amount of, of the, of a transfer. It can't be more than ten percent of, um, the county's total budget for that fiscal year.
Any other questions or, uh, comments? Counsel, I, uh, yeah, Mr. Iverson?
Yeah. So, uh, ten percent, if, if I've got this correct, is what, four point two million?
Is it general fund or total?
The statute says it's your total annual budget. There is a little question. I think Kim Shaw believes that, that there, that she had a conversation with somebody at the state that said it was ten percent of the general fund over the statute reads and what our ordinance reads, because it tracks the statute, is ten, no more than ten percent of Monroe County's total annual budget for that fiscal year.
So if we're being extremely cautious, we would limit it to the general fund. And that would be what, three point seven, thirty-seven million?
It's still well within the threshold. However, um, Kim, we talked to the lady at the DLGF that Kim thought she talked to, and she referred us SBOA and said she doesn't talk about that, just SBOA. So we're well within those means. I don't know why you guys are thinking about your comfort zone. Uh, but if we, if you pick something and we add it up and it is too much, we're just going to let you know and cut it back to what it can be.
About ten percent.
But we, we're not anywhere near
Right.
that amount that we're, that we're even considering. Um, but I, I do like the idea of, of going, uh, a little bit more than what we have, uh, you know, typically thought of when making this type of transfer, right? You know, two million dollars, I think, to me, is, is the minimum we should be thinking right now, considering the, uh, just the uncertainty involved over the next, uh, you know, a couple, two or three years. So I would very much support, uh, a two million dollar or more, uh, transfer is, uh, and, you know, would, would be happy to, yeah, Mr. McKem?
Yeah, I don't see any reason not to. And I guess I'd like the auditor's opinion on this, but is there any reason why we wouldn't go to three million dollars? That would still leave us with
Exactly.
And that, and it'd still leave us with an operating balance projected of forty-three percent. So I think, I, I, I don't see any rea- I don't know. Ms. Smith, do you have any, you see any reason why we couldn't go with three million dollars?
No, in the end, it's really your guys' decision. And I hate to give an exact number to recommend to you. I would rather give like a number that I'm most comfortable with that's conservative. So one point five is that. And, but I believe that should be a minimum. And if you guys double that, um, I think that's very prudent.
Yeah.
I think.
Well, counsel, I would like to make a motion. Um, with, with your permission. I move that we, uh, transfer, um, three million dollars. Hard to say that much money, um, from the general fund into the Rainy Day Fund.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any, uh, any discussion, Ms. Hawk?
Yes. I'd like for the record to show that our intent is to have these dollars there to, uh, get us through what we believe will be, uh, the challenge of, of twenty-two, perhaps twenty-three. Uh, so that, uh, future council members, as it turns over and they go back and say, well, why did they do that? Let's have it on the record why we did and to make sure that we have money to operate county government.
Absolutely.
Uh, Ms. McKem?
Yep, to- totally agree. And just one other kind of subsidiary point related to budget philosophy. And that's that we really want to have one savings account. Uh, and that's the Rainy Day is our savings account. We, you know, we've been moving in the last couple of years to, um, not having lots of little pockets of money in, in different funds where there might be kind of a, um, almost a, a, a view that that money is there to be spent. Um, so if we, if we slowly move to a process where we've got one savings account, then I think there's a lot more. I would say budgetary transparency, public, the public knows what our, uh, much more clearly what our reserves are. We don't have to say, well, there's this much in the reassessment fund, that's much in the, in the aviation fund and everything. We have one savings account.
Yeah, and we don't. Man.
Yes.
We, uh, since we are, uh, self-insured, we never know when we might get hit with a really rough year there with it because that doesn't come back into the general fund automatically. It sits there and builds up. Uh, but we could also have a year that gets spent down. I remember what, it's not been that many years ago. We had to, uh, put some money into there, quite a bit of money. So we just don't know what's going to happen. And it isn't like, except for spending this money. We're just taking it out of here and we're putting it into savings so that we don't spend it down too quickly.
Uh, Mr. Deckard?
Thank you very much. I, I support this, this three, um, the number's a little bit higher than I thought we were going to do, but I think it's a good thing that we're doing it. And I think that, um, when I was looking at the memo earlier, I noticed that it would, it had originated with people in county government that aren't necessarily working in county government now, but look at that gift moving forward to have that fund. Uh, we all watch the news and we see a lot of jurisdictions that, um, are, are currently in this time period dealing with some tough times at every level and, and thinking through things. We're thinking about year to two years, three years from now. And having this, I think is a good thing, a good story for our taxpayers who we know need services. They want services, they demand services, and we've consistently been there for them. I think it's very fiscally prudent to, to do things that guarantee that.
Thank you. Any other question? Ms. Munson, did you have a, a comment or a question?
It was, it was superseded by other comments. That's fine. It was, it was superseded by other comments. That's fine. We can move on.
Okay, okay. Any other, anything else? Okay, so any public comment on this item? It looks like Mr. Shelton would like to make a public comment. Welcome, Mr. Shelton.
Okay, now I'm unmuted. Good evening, Jim Shelton, taxpayer and service user. I applaud you for doing this. I think you've, you're very wise to have looked for this, and I really appreciate you taking care of us like this. Please approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, I think we're ready for a roll call vote on a transfer of $3 million to Rainy Day.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right. Very good, thank you. And so now we'll move on to item 18, which is a discussion and approval of amendments to the 2021 county budget. We've got a, kind of a litany here that we'll go through. And I'll move now to make amendments to the 2021 county budget. Ms. Wiltz, feel free to read them off.
Here we go. Apologies, I was muted. Counsel, I move to open Fund 1107-0000 Aviation and increase account line 17801 part-time from $20,000 to $35,000 to accommodate the part-time base increase of $14 per hour.
Second.
Okay, any council comments? Any public comment? We'll do a roll call vote, please.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Counsel, I move to approve the new 2021 budget total for Fund 1107-0000 in the personnel category of $655,212 for a grand total of $1,142,662.
Second.
Any council comments or questions?
What, I, not, tell me again what we're doing.
This is incorporating the part-time line changes from the previous meeting.
And just for 2020, we're changing the 2020 salary.
2021.
Well, but I don't want to approve the entire 2021 salary ordinance, so can I just approve that part?
It's-
No. This isn't even the salary ordinance. This, all we're doing is, is amending the proposed budget, which we still haven't even voted on. So we're just amending that proposed budget to accommodate that, that future change. So yeah, it wouldn't even take effect till 2021. And even then, we still have to adopt the budget.
Right, and I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure what we were doing.
Yeah, we've got, we've got a host of these. And we had asked Michelle and the council office staff to contact the departments to get their updated numbers for, you know, what this move to $14 an hour would, would create for them. And so now we're just incorporating that into the proposed budgets.
Right, well, when I was reviewing this, this is what I was seeing, each of the different departments and what, what the changes were going to be. I didn't hear the larger amount that Councilmember Wiltz just said. Anyway.
So I mean-
Yeah.
It's got, it's got a, in terms of how it's laid out in the agenda, after each department's change, it's a, there's a new total that we talk about. And I don't know, is that necessary?
Oh, you could read all of them in one motion and then change the total amount. Could you not have, oh, well, never.
And, you know, this is really Kim Shaw's housekeeping motion to make sure that you guys have put another set of eyes on the amendments that you talked about during the budget. And so that when she brings to you the budgets for approval, that they're accurate. So I think, I agree that it could be, as, you know, sort of one large motion. But she's really just trying to make sure that what she thinks you guys want to change in the budget is correct.
Okay.
I would be happy with one. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Where were we?
So we are discussing the second of the many things. So the second part of A, and we are ready to vote unless there, oh, no, we need public comment, right? Do we need public comment?
Yes, I, I think that's kind of where we stop. Mr. McKem?
Oh, okay, I'm just-
Do we want, do we want to just, do we want, what we could do is just continue-
Way more process than is needed.
Yeah, we could continue this to the 19th and just do it all in one big, kind of omnibus motion on the 19th.
Let's do that.
Okay. So Counsel, I'll move that we just continue the remaining items on, on agenda item, what are we, what is this, 18?
18, yes.
To our next meeting, which will be first reading of the budget. And we can, we can instruct our staff to just combine this all into one large motion and get it done then.
I'm seconding that.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Any public comment? Okay. We'll do a roll call vote.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, we just knocked out five pages of the agenda right there, and we'll go to item 19. And this is the minutes.
Ooh, Counsel, I move to approve the summary minutes for the August 11th, 2020 regular session and August 25th, 2020 work session as presented.
Second. Second.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about the minutes? Any discussion? Any public comment on the minutes? We'll do a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, and item 20 is council comments. Do we have any? I can't remember last time we had 20 items on an agenda. Any, anybody have comments that they'd like to make tonight? Before we adjourn, Ms. Wiltz?
I do have one thing I'd like to just bring up and, and kind of an update slash open for discussion if people want to. We've talked about very generally some of the things that we could be doing as a county to improve our transparency and accountability to the public. And one of those, one of those things that I think would be very beneficial is the creation of a public information specialist. Put together and, and a position description. And this was with, with the help of a couple of my colleagues. And just to, to kind of give you an idea of what I'm thinking about and have submitted to the Commissioner's Office. It, this, this type of position would be responsible for obtaining, maintaining and representing data on county government services and the impacts, and then putting that onto public-facing servers. And it would then, in that sense, be aiding the transparency of a lot of the activities in county government. And essentially, hopefully, work on the process of building trust and nurturing legitimacy within and without county government. The idea would be that this position would work across the government and the different departments, including law enforcement and jail and, and other departments that have data that the public is interested in seeing. And they would obviously need to work pretty closely with, with multiple departments, including our technical services department. And we, we, you know, I, in thinking about how, how this type of position would operate across county government, I think a couple of things are important, at least to, to me. And one thing would be that this person has a pretty, a pretty good grasp of the, the quantitative and, and technical skills that are needed for managing and analyzing and interpreting large sets of data. The other thing that I think is very important is that this position be housed in a neutral department, so to speak, so that it is performing a service for multiple departments or divisions of government, but is able to be a little bit more independent, perhaps, than some of, some of the other, his other ideas on positions where they would report to just one department head or elected official. To that end, we, like I said, with, with input from specifically Counselor Iverson and Counselor Deckard, I submitted a job description to the Commissioner's Office for them to review and consider. And I'm sure it will come out differently on the other end, but it was submitted in, in kind of good faith for their consideration.
Great, thank you for, thank you for your comments. And I, I too would like to, you know, continue to see kind of the ball advance on that position. I think it's a, a really good idea. And I'm glad, glad you have kind of been attempting to, to get that moving further through the process. So look forward to, to future updates on it. Any other questions or comments? From Counsel, Mr. McKem?
Oh, just not on this topic, just general council comments or, oh, yeah. I, is, is Ms. Rice still here? She sent something into the chat that I think we need to get read into the record, a correction to something we did earlier today.
Yeah, it was that, I have been in touch with Jeff Parkrill though and other people. There was, the correction was about the start date for the solid waste inter-local agreement. And it's my understanding that that probably still needs clarified with the- So let's, I'll clarify that with the Commissioners and the Solid Waste Board. And we'll make sure that we know that, that exact start date to that in our local, and then we'll bring it back to you if it needs clarified. But thank you, Councilmember McKem, for bringing that up. I appreciate it. So no clarification tonight.
Right.
Okay.
Got it.
Any other comments from council members? Okay, seeing none, we will adjourn. And our next meeting will be first reading for the budget on October 19th. And that is at 5:00 PM, is that right, Ms. Miller? I believe it's 5:00 PM.
Let me double check that, but I'm fairly certain you're correct, too.
I should have that handy myself.
Yes, it is at 5:00 PM.
Okay, 5:00 PM on the 19th for first reading. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thanks.
Bye.
Bye.